Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, I'd like to call this Planning Commission, Advisory Planning Commission meeting to order Wednesday, October 2nd, 7:00 PM. Acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of status. And I'd like to start off by acknowledging that we have a resignation from the APC Julie Chamberlain. As also she's resigning. So five minutes.
Moving on to the introduction of late items.
Are there any? No.
Moving on to the doc, or sorry, approve the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
I so move.
Second, great. Any discussion?
All favor?
Yep.
Yeah. Right, moving on to the adoption of minutes that the Advisory Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 26, 2024 be adopted.
Did we had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Yes.
I so move.
A second. All favor?
Okay, moving on to items for discussion. We have a report of planning consultant dated October 22, 2024.
October 2nd.
Oh, my apologies, October 2, 2024 regarding 2026, 270 Espinon Avenue. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proponents have made an application to change the various zoning requirements for this site to accommodate a proposed 72-unit hotel and a 4,000-square-foot restaurant. It's, the restaurant itself is going to have a seating capacity of 33 seats. The required changes include the following: the floor area ratio needs to be changed from 1.5 to 1.62, the building height from 15 meters to 20 meters, and the lot coverage from 75% to 95%. The site is located at 260, 270 Espinad, and the site is currently serviced and is located adjacent to a major road roadway that moves traffic in an east, a west to east direction, and the site consists of two parcels, one with the civic address of 260 Espinad and the other with the address as 270 Espinad. The site is surrounded by commercial uses along the southern, western, and eastern boundaries. The southern portion of the site also butts against Littlewood Avenue. To the north and across the street from the two lots are pay parking stalls and the beachfront park. Access to the site's parcade will be from Littlewood Avenue, with the main entrance to the hotel being from Espinad Avenue. The site is currently designated as a village center area, and if this application is to proceed, the site will not need an OCP redesignation as the proposed use is compatible with this designation. In addition to this, the site is within the Lake Shore Development Permit Area, which addresses form and character issues for the, for the property development. Excuse me. The proposed height changes is due to the three-vehicle parcade that will be built. With the three-floor parcade, parking will be provided for not 115 stalls, but 112 stalls. We've received an updated package today that indicates it's 112 vehicles. And the first, for the scale of this project, the required number of parking stalls would be 83. The first three floors of park of the hotel would consist of the parcade, with the hotel units being located on levels four to six. The proposed restaurant would be located on the second floor. And given that the proponents have increased the onsite parking requirements by 29 stalls, the suggested changes to the far, the lot coverage, and the building height have some merit to the proposed development. However, staff have the following concerns with this application: what are the impacts going to be to the water and the sewer system, and the potential for the creation of any shade areas? However, since we last spoke, the APC can recommend, as per the New Development Approval Information Bylaw, any additional studies that the APC determines will help the council with their final decision. This would, and all of that additional information that's requested would be required before the bylaw can be adopted. And you'll see in your, your package, we're talking about bylaw number 1210, 2024, which is the development, which is on pages 22 to 31 of your agenda package. And that's the report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kossi. Um. Do we have comments?
Can I ask this question?
Yes, of course.
Of my, oh, I also forgot, I'm sorry, before we start, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I forgot to mention that the applicant or their agent are in the audience to make a presentation, and you can ask questions of the developer directly, as you, as the APC requires.
Good.
My apologies.
No, 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 thank you very much, sir. So you ready to do the presentation? Yep, please, thank you. Is that okay?
I had a question.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Can I have a question for Ken?
Yes, ma'am.
The, the guidelines were adopted, the design guidelines were adopted. Correct, by the council?
Yes. And they're also in your package for your review.
Yes. Now, because this application presumably came in before these were adopted, are they relevant?
Yes, they are your.
They are relevant.
Yes. Yes.
And is the, is it the APC's job to, to review these guidelines in conjunction with this application?
No, that's, that's a form and character issue, that they're, they've been provided for your information.
Okay, so we have no say in this, no recommendation on the design and format?
No, the recommendation this evening is not on the development permit that is associated with this. The recommendations that the count, that the APC will be providing is on the zoning requirements. So what it could be, the impacts be because of the height, the floor area ratio, all of those sorts of things. And so this is where the new tools under the Development Approval Information will come into effect. How's it going to impact the traffic? If we proceed with this rezoning application, how's that going to impact the traffic flows? How's it going to impact the sewer and water systems? That's what the Development Approval Information Bylaw does for the APC and for the Village Council now.
Okay, but the, the design guidelines are not in our, in our, in our purview?
Not, no.
They're not at all, we can't even comment on that?
No.
Okay.
Yep. Hey, Mr. Yes.
I'd like clarification, if I could, on what Judy has brought up about the that were passed on the meeting in September 9, I think it was. The design guidelines were put into place. And if you look at the Lake Shore requirements, there's almost 15, 15 pages of considerations in there. How is it that this now does not have to be considered under those new guidelines?
It was, the new guidelines were shared with the applicant's agent.
Okay, and?
Try that again, please.
The, the applicant's agent was provided with a copy of the draft guidelines.
They're now adopted.
They're now adopted, yes.
And so they apply?
They applied, yes.
The new guidelines?
Yes.
But they're not up to us to, to comment on the guidelines?
No. That's, yes, the council has asked you to, to look at the zoning bylaw. That is what has been referred to, the APC table, is the zoning bylaw, not the development permit, not the development permit guidelines.
Okay. Okay. Your presentation? Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair and all the member, can I just? Thanks, all the member, really appreciate for giving us a chance to present this project. This is on, the project is on the two properties, 260 and 270, as Ken mentioned earlier. The total size of the total parcel combining two parcels is approximately half an acre parcel. The total buildable is approximately 1.62 FSR, which we are asking for the variance from the 1.5, which is a, which is part of the existing NCP. There are, the total, the hotel is 71 room, the total project is a 71-room hotel. I'm just going to go through a little bit of more brief. So when we started working on this project, one of the main criteria for one, as far as for the parking, one of the issue which is not only here, the majority of the projects, when you have a commercial, you have a hotel, and you have a restaurant, and, and the parking is always a big issue. So I, I tried to convince my client that we not only need to provide the zoning bylaw requirements with respect to the parking, actually, we need to provide more because it's, it's an issue if you want to have a successful project at this location. And, and, you know, I have been here many times, and parking is always a challenge to find, and it's always like that. And now in this project, it's a hotel, plus we have a restaurant, plus we have a multipurpose room, and 71 hotel prod, room, hotel project. So we started with this, one of the good thing is that we have, we have lane and the road on the both sides. So we are accessing the property from the rear side, from the Littlewood Avenue, and that is for the parking. And for the main entrance, the hotel will be having actually from the Espaline Avenue. Now, the main hotel lobby will have two elevators. One is dedicated to the commercial, which I will call restaurant and hotel part. And the second one is only going to the rooms, and this is for the, based on our past experience on the, from the security point of view, to keep it, the people not going to their rooms, and they will be dedicated accordingly. Me and Grafford will have a cafe and, and open seating, but it's mostly kind of more of a social public plaza at the grade level with the washroom, I think accessible washroom being provided. And then we have second floor. The ground floor hotel plus the restaurant, and plus we have the multipurpose room, they're all, the height-wise, they are actually all being provided four and a half meters, so that can for higher ceilings. And, and that is one of the reason we have, we have, we are asking for the variance in the height because you cannot have 10 feet high these bigger areas because you want it to look grand, there's a ducting, there's plumbing, a lot of stuff comes in, and later on it's become challenging during the building permit and the construction stage, which is on our experience. But on the rear side, the parquet is still going to be nine feet high. So I'm just going to go back, actually, like go to one of the sections, which actually is pretty interesting. So if you see from the Espaline Avenue, which I'm pretty sure you have seen the package, you can actually, if you counted, you can see there's a main-level restaurant, multipurpose, and then you have a hotel. So you can count the five-story over there. But if you go back, we actually slid, we actually put another floor within the parking to make it work because parking, we don't need that much of height, so you can work with the nine feet high in there. But for restaurant and the other rooms we have, so hotel rooms, again, going back to, they're going to be 10 feet high, which is a typical. So I'm going to go back to the floor plans. Just go through the floor by floor. And then second floor, we have provided the restaurant, but what we did is we actually pushed back the building from the frontage. So our hotel at the grade level is right on the property line with, with benches and a little bit of landscaping provided along the, along the north side. But on the top floor, we actually provided not only a few, a deck on the side. So the restaurant will have an outdoor, outdoor patio on the frontage and the parking on the backside with a kitchen provided. And the same thing goes for the hotel building, with, with, we have a multipurpose room. We'll also have a patio fronting that, fronting the north side towards the water. But then we have a, on the rear side, then at this level, we have rooms, which are hotel rooms starting. We are showing right now two-bedroom hotel, but this will be more into conversation with the owners, which may change kind of what, what kind of rooms we are going to have in the future. And, and then upper level, we kept the building still stepped back. We didn't bring it up to the facade. We want to have that kind of, we understand because the building is going a little bit higher, but we also actually pushed it back to create less shadowing effect on the north side. One of the good thing about the, the kind of the site location is that facade on the north side, we have already Espaline Avenue, then you have a parking, and then there's a walkway. And then, so it's not going to impact the, the greenery, actually, the green pathway on the park, on, on the, on north side. So we have two dedicated floors, which are going to be for the rooms, which is level five and level six. On top of that, we have also provided rooftop patio, this is more of a social plaza. So what we did is actually provided a break through it, and then we have actually, kind of in between, we have a glass railing looking. So the overall, the character of the building and the planning point of view, the way it's done is to provide the, as much maximum view towards the north side, towards the water. Now, with respect to, coming back to now the elevations, the interesting thing about Espaline Avenue, the existing building, is that every building has its own character and which creates this really nice walkway, and it's not creating that monotonous or the, I will say. So there's a harmony in there in the colors. So most of the colors which are used in part in the existing ones are more for warm colors. So what we try to do is kind of bringing a little bit of the existing character, what we already have, but also creating an individuality within the building. So we have this, a, a stair section and an elevator section going all the way top to bottom. On the farther, which you, on the page, you can see on the left side, we have that brick cladding on the going. And the ground floor, to create a more enhancement, we have created actually kind of a, the tall, tall glazing. And intentionally, we did not put any room at the grade level towards, towards exterior side, because we want to have this openness when you're walking beside these two properties. The entrance to the pla, to the hotel is actually within that tower portion of the project. And you can see level two and level three, the both decks have a glass railing facing this way, facing the north, and we have tried to put the glazing as much as, now, there may be some, when we go into a little more detail with the structural design, there may be some columns, some comes up, and there may be some, a little bit of glazing may get affected, but the idea over here is to get as much as possible in there. And then from level three, level five and level six, the rooms, those rooms have bigger windows, more views on this side, and we created a separate identity with the vertical cladding on it. We want to create it as separation, visual separation. So this is kind of a dividing the building top to bottom. And we also added additional, a metal canopy on top of that, level two. And I, I don't think so, I have a pointer, but there's a metal canopy which is actually covering the patio on the top. So in case of rain and everything, you will actually sit outside and can enjoy this. And I'm just going to go back to, again, sections which shows a little bit better. It doesn't show the canopy in this one, but actually you can see the, how the slabs are coming out. Now, side elevations, because we are going property line to property line, and by code, I have to have two aerated system, which means it's going to be concrete block wall right at the edge of the properties. But our design is done in a way that the building is stepped back, it's not right to the edge. So that's where the rebuilding, these windows are coming off. And the rear side, we are, we are still having conversation that how, are we going to eat, leave the parquet open, or are we going to have some kind of architectural metal screen over here? I think that thing is only thing which is still in flex. But other than that, you can see the rooms on the top, which will be having a direct sun view on the south side. So the idea is to have actually full, high-shaped building with the full, as much as friendly, we can take it from the north as well as the south side on the both sides of the building. Again, going back to the same section, it's showing the same context, but that is the, that is the minimum. And the, how we came up with the room numbers and all that kind of thing is based on my coordination with, because clients, based on the performer, what is the minimum required? Is there a, you know, a financial aspect of it and all that kind of thing? Because three-story parking, the thing in this building is up to three level, the building have to have in concrete because of the parquet. Above, we will discuss with the code consultant and everything. Hotel rooms can be two-story in a wood-framed building, but the lower three stories are all going to be concrete, which impacts a lot for this kind of project, which is increase the cost substantially. And that's why we try to keep it in such a way that performer can work and hotel can be successful. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to open the floor to questions?
Yeah, I got a question, like you said, the, the height, is that total height total? Or is it to the roofline plus the elevator roof?
Elevator roof is in addition to that, yes. 20 plus, I will say.
20 plus?
20, yes, it's 20 plus, it's going to be, elevator is going to be another 2.3, 2, 2 meter, I will say.
So we're looking at 22 meters?
So basically, the 20 meters is to there? Yes.
You're saying with the here?
It's to here.
Yeah. So then you're adding?
It's, it's the rule, paraboid, we are talking, what, yeah, that's with.
But you're going more than 20, as well.
Yes.
You're asking for 20, but you're going more than 20.
Yes. Okay, so I've got a number of questions here. Check-in parking location for the hotel when guests come. They expected to arrive on SFA to take up parking spots there for, for check-in? Or is there some sort of interior in the parking lot we point over there? Okay. So. Yeah.
Okay, now.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just go back to floor. So the idea is that ground floor will be for the, the parquet, the grade level is going to be more about the restaurant, as well as multipurpose, as well as for the, for the social area. But level two and level three parking is going to be for the hotel. That's the, that's how the council, so you go up, there will be a, a gate up there. Ah, okay. Okay, so that was actually another question, how do you separate that? Are you sure you keep it up for parking spots for, for the hotel? So, so the idea is to keep that totally separate? Yeah, but so when a guest arrives to check into the hotel? Yeah. Where do they, where do they arrive? Where do they pull up? They pull up, actually, if you see right beside, the first parquet, we kept a space beside it. Can I go over there, actually? It's easy for me. Sure.
There, there was a screen behind you as well.
Okay. So, yeah, you can, you can park with, this is a space where we have provided kind of a people can work in. For a check-in, that's right. Okay, okay, so, okay, good, good. Did you know that SFA gets very busy, especially in summertime, when, when tourists are there? Yeah. And there may not be room for, for check-in cars. You have any accommodation for EV parking in the parking lot? I think we haven't discussed that, but generally 20 to 25%, that's what we are going to do for this building. Okay, okay, so that's just not in the line yet? We, we haven't discussed that yet. Okay, but. I think that is pretty norm these days. I think, I don't think so, I have, have any project done in the last two years without any parking. It is going to have EV parking. Okay. Good, good. But I have to make a lot of that, so that's. Yeah, I presume that's in the bylaws as well? Yeah, so. Yeah, so that's. I just didn't see it written or to hear anymore. Yeah, it's not. Yeah. Okay. And then the, will the parking lot be open to the public? So you say that the lower level will be open? Yes. To the public? Yeah. And then the upper levels will be reserved for the hotel? For the hotel, yes. I guess, I had a question about setbacks from the highway, from the, from Littlewood. And one of the recommendations I'm going to put forward is to have, I guess, a transportation report done from highways. Right, and that would, I guess they would address that if, if there was an issue there? Yes, we will, I haven't seen anything. It's been already sent to them? Has been sent to them. Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, of course.
The, the council requested that it be sent, we referred to the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, the Fire Department, and the APC.
Perfect, so let's check those off, yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kossi. Yes, Littlewood is the highway, then it's going to go to Motte, and then we will get it. Yeah. Comments, because if we are providing access from Motte, it has to be approved by them. Of course, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. And community contributions for the project here, is that, is this a, would that be discussed already in this stage?
Unfortunately, the past legislation has taken away the community amenity contributions, and now there's amenity contributions, and we don't have that bylaw in place yet.
But that's coming?
That's coming, that's one of the things that's on the work list, we're waiting. Yes, but the, the CAC issue is no longer legal. Well, never was, but it's, it's definitely out now.
And will that, that'll apply to this project, Mr. Kossi?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It, the AAC bylaw will be set up similar to like the development cost charges by law. That's the requirements under the new legislation.
Okay, thank you.
And also on the electric vehicle charger, there's a provision in the, in the bylaw that requires one station for every 20 parking spots.
So it's 20 percent? Yeah. Or 20, yeah, it's 10. Yeah. Okay. And then I had a question about safety and security in the parking lot, and if you're, have a gate for the hotel parking, do you plan to any, like, emergency buttons? On, in the parking? Parking lot, yeah. Yeah, I think we haven't discussed that, but yes, there will be. Okay. Okay.
If that is the. Mr. Chair, if that is the pleasure of the APC, you can make that as a recommendation that a SEP TED report be conducted on the, the parking lot area.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to put that, for that forth. Surface water and surface water recycling, is any thought being given to being able to recycle, somehow use the surface water for irrigation or something like that? Not currently. Okay.
Can I add to that?
Of course, yeah.
Where is the, the stormwater going? Is it going into the, into the municipal system? Or it's not soaking away, there's no room for it?
There's no room for it, so, yeah.
So it's all going into the stormwater management?
Yeah, currently, that's how it's, we haven't did detailed discussion with the civil designer there. But that's my understanding. Okay. So, Mr. Kossi, would we be able to make a recommendation that the points look into?
Yes, Mr. Chair, you can do that. As a matter of fact, maybe this is a good time if we could jump in on the, the development approval bylaw. If you want to turn to pages 29 to 31 of your agenda package. These are the different categories, when you're looking at for the impacts that the app, that the proposed project may have on the natural environment, these are the issues that need to be addressed. Then you go over to the next heading on page 30, halfway down, says transportation issues and patterns. If required, the report must do X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
Then if you go to page 31, when you look at the local infrastructure, the report must do the estimate for the community water demand, the sewer system, and what was just talked about with the, with the surface drainage or the stormwater. Those issues can be, can be addressed now at a cost to the, to the developer, and the reports have to be accepted by, by the Village Council. And then as well, if you wanted to look at the public facilities and community services, and if required, you can look at the, how's it going, you know, impact the schools? How's it going to impact the protective services, such as the fire, police, healthcare, and other recreational services? So those are some of the new tools that are now available because of the adoption of the. So those are some of the new tools that are now available because of the adoption of the uh new official community plan.
Okay, and if I'm correct here, Mister Costi, the transportation issues and patterns. Uh is one that was already uh requested, uh as is the local infrastructure, is that correct?
Uh we haven't requested anything yet at this particular point in time, Mister Chair. Uh we can, as we go through this process of collecting the data, find out how the A P C feels about it, find out what the public hearing. Response is and find out what the responses from the Fire Department and find out what the responses from the Ministry of of Transportation. And then we can start asking for all of these studies. So there's nothing wrong, though, with the A P C. Uh making a recommendation that we got to do a transportation study to address whatever item you feel is appropriate. The same with the local infrastructure or any of these other things under this development approval information by law.
Okay. More questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, Mister Colonel.
To the untrained eye, uh these renderings are very difficult to interpret. And uh, you know, when I see that sidewall, I guess that means building block, whatever. Whatever, but what I'd, and as far as uh I miss having Mister Costi sitting right beside me. Because he comes with his built in amplifier, but it's not coming through the same way of this.
I I'm sorry about that.
Oh gee whiz, well, I might not have heard everything you said, but. Um, I'm afraid I'm facing the same frustration that I had at the other meeting. When we considered another proposal where. Number one, we're told that uh the bylaw to be amendment amended. We have to consider these three things and uh I have concerns about them. My first reaction when I saw this package at the September ninth meeting. I had an overall favorable disposition to this. Building, it looked like a reasonable proposal. But when I look at what the significance is for the change in height. That'll allow basically six stories. Even if there are setbacks that to take care of the sun and everything else, it's still going to uh. In my mind, it's going to create a problem. And uh. I just don't, I don't see it. And then, of course, in our package that we were sent. We saw the design guideline guidelines, and if they apply to this one. There are some very significant concerns that will stand in the way of this thing going ahead. For example, on A three O three. A three O three, that shows. The building from Lillawatt. If that's the case. What concerns me about this particular proposal and maybe others in the future? Esplanade is the front street, it faces on the front street. But I hesitate to see Lillawatt turned into a back alley. And that it's not, it's Lillawatt is a significant commercial street in itself. And when that streetscape is completed down that side, it'll be a very significant thing, it'll be. It it'll will always look like the backs of the buildings that are on Esplanade. But there is something here, right now, you know, on that property, there is a bylaw that said you you can't even have chain link. On that side and you have, and I'll be glad to see that gone, but when I look at A three O three. Those, those look to me like metal bars across. Okay, metal bars, to me, that's just like putting a chain fence up. I think it needs to be solid, something or other. To enable if this is going to be facing on to Esplanade, and that's a hu- a height, that's not a just a. A a big fence. Those should be solid, and if you recall at the meeting on the ninth, I think it was Theresa that suggested. Some murals or something like that to, you know, to give this some character. And so if those, that dividing area, get rid of those metal bars. Cause that'll look like any old parking lot or parking garage downtown Vancouver, we don't want that. Make it solid of some kind and then figure out a way to be able to put murals or something. I don't know if you've been down Lickman Road lately and looked at that new hotel, they have an absolutely fascinating way. Of putting a mural on the outside of their building, it's built into the siding. It looks, I mean, I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying there's some significant things that can be done. To give this an overall appearance. Now, I know I'm straying, I said I am frustrated because I'm not looking at just the menu items and the. Bylaw amendment. I'm looking at other things, I won't get into details because I'm not still not sure, but the new design guidelines. If they apply, there are some very significant concerns in the design guidelines for the Lake Shore. Street that will apply here, that'll get in the way. And as I said, just for that, there's fifteen pages of guidelines, there are fourteen. That uh that apply, and that's a bit of a concern because I think it might. Put the squash on some of the things that are actually attractive. So I think that uh, as I said, it's a frustration for me, as far as the changes. I'm concerned about the uh increase in lot coverage. I know your side limits are basically fence to fence, property line to property line. And I know there are setbacks from the front, but from the back. I don't see it, there's nothing there and that's a concern. The density, oh, not as it says, denasty, density. Um. That may not be as big an issue on this one as as I see it, but to me. What is a major concern and I, if I had to make a decision here tonight, I don't know if I could approve. A change up to twenty meters on what is our prime suite in front of the lake. Twenty meters. I have a trouble with that, and as I said, I'm I'm disposed to this, I like the idea of, I think there was very creative thinking here. And I'm glad to see it, but I think it's taking and just. Stretching everything right to the very limits. And the idea that there may not be any onsite amenities for the public, that's a concern. Cash does or whatever the other of the alternative. Um. The fact that the public can go into the restaurant, I don't consider that an amenity, an amenity is some. A chance to get up and put a sit your sit back on a chair and look out at the lake. Maybe you can do that, I didn't see where that would happen, would that happen?
We have a outdoor um amenity on the rooftop. Uh but all the other floors are more of a public private spaces other than three spaces which are, but we have, that's the. Um, that's the one of the thing we did, and we took it to the elevator on the rooftop to make it uh more social.
Yeah, is that open to the public then, or is that open for the hotel hotel guests only?
Well, right now, there's a dedicated elevator going on the way up, we haven't, I I we haven't, I I can't answer that question that if it is open to the public yet. So it is, it is, it is like any restaurant, if somebody's coming like, I'm not sure how how much. From security point of view, is it something um even viable, like I I think there are few. Uh few things to see in there, uh but I want to come back to uh this screen thing, if I can respond to it. Okay, hundred percent agree, nobody wants to see what's there, and when I was driving over here in Lillawatt to tell you the truth. There's a substantial difference between the architectural corrector along along the Esplanade as well as. Even currently, there's a concrete walls in the existing building, I won't even say existing in the new building, but I have seen over here. And when I was saying something earlier, um and I actually don't have internet over here, and what I was saying was the architectural. Screens and those screens are amazing, they are not like. I I wanted to do two things in this, especially this thing, the parking, when you put the concrete wall. Or anything solid, it just not only create the dark spaces inside, it creates really bad architecture actually from. So when I I am fully understand when you're saying murals or something to make it more interesting from from corrector point of view. But those architectural mesh screen, what they have is actually they come up with really nice colors and everything, but they also have. Peek through holes, so from Septed point of view, it's really nice to actually, you can see through it, but they are really nice to. So we already looking into that, that's why when I started the exhibition, I kind of said that that we are looking into that we. I don't want to, but at this presently, what I what I wanted to do is, okay, let's keep it open. But I don't want to close it, so I heard it pretty clear, we we wanted to be closed, but we also wanted to be a little bit more. Interesting in architectural style, and I I I don't have right now, but I I have I have done that uh another project in somewhere.
Pardon me, Mister Chair, um we're kind of wading into the form and character of the look of the building, I understand that's where. Where uh Mister Gardner's frustration is, but we're here to speak to the zoning issues, the floor area ratio, the lot coverage and the. So um what I've heard so far is that um that there's obviously some challenges and if. Uh there were some reports that you were mentioning that you were interested in requesting.
Yeah.
Um, did you want to propose a motion with respect to the?
One one more, one more comment to make is has to do with the bylaw, the height bylaw. And I mean, I I like the concept of the building, I think it's it's great, and I think would be great for Harrison, uh but I have a problem with the height. Um, and uh was there any consideration given to making the first level of parking underground? To be able to shrink the whole building down a little bit, to sort of sink the whole thing down.
Yeah, we looked at that, um and based on the existing, the issue is we cannot go full story height below it. Um, we're only doing three foot, like not a meter and something like that. And that doesn't give us too much to to chew on to even delete the floor in there. And and the other thing is, um when you are putting any, it doesn't matter residential or commercial. Um spaces above above the um above the amenity areas. Um, but we have to keep the ceiling heights higher in the in those zones because. So much plumping and so much ducting comes in and keep people don't look at that because it's not only for my character, we are looking. At this has to be buildable at the end of the day, and that come becomes challenging later on.
Um.
And that's why what we did is, right now, I have only like nine feet exactly from before in the parking, and I want to. I can reduce it six inches, like not a lot, right, I can I can go, I can go down a little bit too, but it's going to. Overall, maybe um I think um maybe we can do a meter or something like that, I can do, look into that, but. That is the only play I have.
So why why can you not go down further?
There's no reason why you cannot go further than a couple feet, there's no reason. A low grass to cost.
You can look into that, if we can go full story, I'm not sure, um if we.
Even if you took down one floor, right? One level down, you can reduce your total height, that's re- that's requested here.
If I may, I I know I may be injecting myself in the wrong, wrong time, but there there's a couple of considerations with the lake being so close, there's. Groundwater considerations and but there's also going to be uh engineering restrictions. Um, one thing to keep in mind is that for um. If 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 they were to go into the ground, there's going to be considerations for the foundation itself. To prevent water from coming into the underground, but also. In in the event that there's ever a power, which means that the stormwater and or uh water in the uh underground would need to be pumped out. So then there's considerations for, would have to be a consideration for backup power, because that's all going to be pumped. Yeah, so there's other other considerations for that as well.
Yeah, I mean, the um. What was built as a quality hotel, the one uh. That one's on the ground completely. So, yeah, that that's, that's what I was thinking, this would be a play a player too, you know.
So when we are talking about the height, so I'm just throwing it out there, is that the overall building height? Because the two sides are like going to be built on the on the like east and west is going to be on the property line. Is the concern is towards the Lakeview side?
Concern is the overall height, so if you look at it, you're walking down the 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 dyke. Uh along Esplanade, and you have this big towering thing.
Yeah.
Sticking up.
So what what we have done on other projects of the municipality is like the way we are stepping back, if you see it, like we are stepping back to the first floor. We are stepping by two and a half meter. How about if we step back further on the fifth and sixth floor? Which will actually substantially changes, like there are ways to uh, you know, work with that because. Right now, in reality, we are, we are only, we are talking about south, because that's a north side, so south side. So as much as we push it back, as much as we can, so we can still utilize the backside, so you won't even. Like we can, we can do a study where we actually, a person is walking towards the road, and if we can even see the sixth floor or not, right? That's that's the kind of the impact from the urban design point of view, the massing study point of view. If you, if we push it back and we still have a building on the backside, definitely from Lillawatt side, you will see it. But from Esplanade, it it's it's a step transition, actually, step transition will look much better. The only concern comes in when some in future, if the neighboring property comes in and they end up with. Straight building, then it's going to look like this building is kind of pushed back in a sense, I'm I'm.
And I guess that would be something to consider if that.
Yeah, or or the correct or some, some of the municipality actually have guidelines just saying, the more you go higher. You you keep on going a two s- two meter step back or something like that, I mean, we can work over.
I definitely think that will help, I I definitely think that would help. Um, but I mean, we're, we're not looking at just twenty meters height, we're looking at actually twenty two meters.
Twenty two meters, yes.
Uh including the the elevator shaft, that's that's just that's that's high.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, so there is a consideration in zoning by law for height for for.
I think in the zoning by law, there's also a requirement to do that step back, if I remember correctly. In the design guidelines, yeah. Right, 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 but.
In this way, we can, I think, I think the developer and the the uh his consultant, their consultant is hearing what you're saying. So I'm assuming that that'll be taken back and.
Yeah, okay.
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 Just my last comment, an awful lot of our policy. With respect to development and. Formatting is is the format and character. And. Considering that what's on that street now, this would be very different. It'd be, but it might establish what would be considered the format and character for that street in the future. And if the format and character of this facility as you proposed. Comes into being and and then it sets a pattern, I think Esplanade is going to have a very big wall. Between the village and and the lake. Um, it may look okay further down the road, up past. The maple or whatever, and then down the other way down toward Aqua Shares. What is the height of Aqua Shares? It's only five floors, isn't it, four?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, is that not seven?
Yeah, seven floors.
So what would be the overall height of that building? You remember offhand?
Not off the top of my head, no. They had, they had to uh go for the change to the zoning as well.
Okay. The minimum height is generally, you can't go less than three meters. It should be minimum, I'm just saying.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that's something, that's one way to do it. But as I said, this is a, this is something that is setting the format and character for Esplanade and, and as I said, if they all came in at this height, um, I think we'd have a problem. But I just, as I said, I, I, I really, I like the idea. Yeah, I'm, I'm disposed to this idea and having a mixture of public-private access for the restaurant. We have quite a few places to eat in the village and that may be an issue for the business community, but I don't know that, and there's more coming online. But that's not our consideration. But I do have that, and I also have the concern about the, the servicing, the infrastructure that will be required. And I know that there has to be what will be the impact to the sewer and water system, let alone the drainage, because again, you've got a pretty well, you prevented the runoff water for a very big space. How is it going to be directed and that sort of? And I know that's down, that's down the road too, but I was gonna leave my comments at that point, but I, I'd have trouble voting for this right now. And yet I'd like to see it go ahead in some way.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. Um. Yeah, so the, I also, I, I really like the idea. I like the concept and so on, but it's just that, that height.
Yes.
Um, yeah.
I agree with you there.
Yeah, yeah. So uh if, if you can look into uh just lowering the whole thing down a little bit, putting, putting some uh the first level parking underground or mostly underground, uh that would be, I think, uh very, very beneficial.
No, I, I want to make a comment. My comment is I don't have a problem. Um, I, I have a problem with all the design guidelines, but I'm told that that will be taken care of separately. So I would like a recommendation to council that they consider the design guidelines carefully. That's reasonable enough, I think is. And I also have concerns with the um rainwater runoff or storm. That's not addressed and it should be addressed as part of this plan, which staff has recommended, which is the water and sewage. I think stormwater should be added into that.
So, yeah, absolutely. So if I may, um, from what I've heard from the committee is that the question is we're looking at a shade study, a Septed report and in infrastructure impact analysis, which your, your infrastructure is going to be your water sewer and storm sewer?
Yes, along the storm.
Yes, yes, that's, that would be part of the.
And then a recommendation to the, to the developer to explore, explore options of uh using that storm water somehow for whatever. Um, also, uh, just a side note, I, I think I remember seeing there was a swimming pool in the underground ground level for the hotel. Yeah, that's great. It's small, but that's.
Did the?
Sorry, go ahead, bro.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is there anything under the uh traffic patterns, transportation issues that, that the APC would like to see addressed?
Yes.
Again, draw your attention to page thirty of your agenda package.
Okay, so um to put a motion together here to and.
I'm trying, I'm trying to put it together.
You're trying to put it together, okay.
Can I, I, can I say that that the APC recommends this proposal subject
Subject to.
Subject to um the infrastructure report, which includes stormwater as well.
So if I may, um, so the committee will uh recommend this committee subject to a shade study, a Septed report, a infrastructure impact analysis, explore uh rainwater recycling. And also the committee mentioned uh exploring bringing the first floor parking onto the underground and then also.
Reduce the height.
Yeah, to reduce the overall height as well as uh provide a traffic, traffic impact.
Transportation, yeah, yeah.
And also that the council review carefully the design guidelines.
Yes. What she said.
Which then covers that.
Yeah.
Okay, because one of the things is this question of pedestrian interest when you look in the guidelines, which we haven't discussed.
So that motion is put forward by the chair. By Judy, put forward by Judy.
Second, thank you.
Second, everyone. All favor, all favor. Can you, can you read it one more time, please? Sorry.
This is chicken scraps.
It's okay, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, so that the uh, the committee, sorry, the commission uh recommends approving this development subject to a shade study, a Septed report, infrastructure impact analysis with uh exploring rainwater recycling, explore putting the first floor underground traffic, uh traffic uh impact analysis as well as council. Uh, keep in mind the uh development guidelines.
Development guidelines, okay. And can we uh have in there also what Mr. Gargano was mentioning, what screening of the parking from?
That's, that's. Okay.
Okay, we're good, we're good.
The reason that we're putting it down is to lower, lower. So, yeah, but I don't, I know.
Yeah, we will work with uh GeoTech and Cities Engineering Department to, to figure it out. Like if we need pump or how much farther we can do, go down without tanking, tanking system. And, and see the financial impact of it, how much it's going to be in the compact. Okay?
Yeah. Okay, excellent. Okay. All right, moving on to item five B, as reported corporate officer dated October second, twenty twenty-four. Terms of reference reporting procedure. So um as mentioned before, uh Ms. Graham is out of town, so I'll be reading presenting this on her app. At the December seventh, twenty twenty-three APC meeting, the APC introduced and resolved to table a discussion relating to process and subsequently, uh to a subsequent meeting. After a letter from a member of the APC to council, council resolved at the July eighth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting to direct staff to work with the APC to develop terms of reference to provide a proper operating rules and procedures. So uh minutes versus recommendations, there has been some discussion that when council receives the minutes of the APC on the consent agenda at a regular council meeting, it is also receiving the APC's recommendations. While it is true that the APC recommendations are contained within the minutes by virtue of the fact that the recommendation is in, is made by resolution, it is important to make the distinction between minutes and APC recommendations. The minutes are a record of where and when a meeting took place, who was in attendance, what topics were uh discussed and what resolutions were passed. When the APC adopts its minutes, it is certifying that the minutes are true and accurate reflection of what took place at that meeting. These minutes are forwarded to the, to council for informal per informal purposes upon adoption by the APC. Whenever there is a referral from the council to the APC, the ensuing recommendation is taken from the minutes and then forms part of the planning consultant's final report. All information from the various referral agencies provided to council in one report. The APC's recommendations also form part of the public hearing information package, if applicable. When council receives the minutes of the APC on the consent agenda, it is not adopting the recommendation contained therein. It is not agreeing to be bound by the decision made by the APC. It is confirming that the fact that the APC met on that date and time in that location and made the decision recorded in the minutes. The input from the APC is taken into consideration when the decision on the application itself is made by council. And discussion around frequency of uh meetings. The APC meetings only or only meet when are, it is referred from council regarding OCP or zoning by law amendments, neighborhood plans, land use policy issues or any other matters referred to it by council. As per section two of the Advisory Planning Commission by law number one zero zero six, twenty twelve. In the absence of a referral, there are no term or no items for the APC to discuss. In twenty twenty-three, the APC met twice and has only met once previously in twenty twenty-four. It is not uncommon, common for the APC to meet irregularly on an as-needed basis. Below is a table outlining the number of APC meetings per year between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty is an anomaly likely due to the uh COVID nineteen pandemic. And as you can see, each year on average sees about two meetings per year. One issue with the frequent, infrequent meetings is that by the time the APC meets again, it could be adopting minutes from a meeting held many months prior. The increase, this increases the chance for errors in the minutes. At the August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four APC meeting, staff suggested that a draft uh minute, or draft minutes be sent once available to the chair by email for secondary review. This seems to be a feasible solution that will mitigate the risk of clerical errors or misrepresentation. If the APC would like to meet to adopt minutes before the recommendations, they have or they've made it uh integrated into a staff report to the council. The APC would meet, be meeting for the sole purpose of adopting minutes unless there was another new referral from council to discuss. Another factor to consider is that the APC meetings are now live streamed on Zoom with video recordings posted to Village, Village YouTube channel. This further reduces the risk of inaccurate meetings as a secondary verbatim record of the existing meetings. The APC experiences or experienced issues in receive achieving quorum as a result of resignations in local membership probably this year. Additional members were appointed in August of twenty twenty-four to remedy this. Despite a recent resignation with the current membership of six commissioners challenging uh in the achieving quorum are expected to be resolved. For section four, six, one, sub one of the Local Government Act states, a council may by bylaw establish an advisory planning commission to advise council on all matters respecting land use, community planning or proposed bylaws and permits under section four to fourteen of this part and section five, four, six, that are referred to the commission by the council. Automatic referrals of uh proposals to the APC are not provided for either by the legislation or the APC bylaw. Both documents expressly state that the APC is to consider matters referred to by its council. The fact that an application is made cannot be the sole factor that, that determines a referral to the APC. Council must consider the application before and determine whether a matter should be referred to the APC. If an application is brought before council by a staff report and there is no recommendation to the, to refer to the APC, council can ask staff why this is the case. It may be that the application meets the requirements of the zoning or villages zoning or OCP bylaws with no amended amendments needed. However, the decision to refer any matter really related to the APC's mandate rests with council and not staff. The distinction between land use and form of character design elements is an important one to make with respect to the APC's mandate. Acceptable building materials, paint colors, architectural features and design elements are, were previously addressed in schedule one D of the now repealed official community plan by law number eight, six, four, two thousand and seven. At the September ninth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting, the council adopted a new guys, design guideline policy uh one point three nine as an accompanying document to the new official community plan by law, one one eight four, twenty twenty-two. Attached to this report is a copy of the staff report and policy for the APC's information. This new policy is the document that will guide design elements for new development permit applications. Terms of reference, before undertaking the process of developing a separate terms of reference document, staff are requesting further direction from the APC with respect to what you would like the document to address. It is possible that the matters the APC would like to see clarified can be addressed adequately by amending Advisory Planning Commission by law number one, one, or one zero zero six, twenty twelve and or council procedure by law, one one six, four, twenty twenty-one, which is currently under review. Previously, the APC was established by by law, which was then repealed in favor of a terms of reference in two thousand and nine. This terms of reference is attached to this report, the APC or for uh the APC's. In twenty twelve, the current APC by law was adopted as required by section four, six, one of the Local Government Act. The twenty twenty-nine terms of reference and the twenty twelve by law are very similar with significant overlap between the two documents. And the recommendation is that corporate office report dated, dated October second, twenty twenty-four regarding terms of reference and reporting procedure be received for information.
So move some second.
Agreed, yeah. Yep. Okay.
You got a motion now to John?
You're open, you're.
Okay, do we, do we want to discuss this?
Yeah, did you, was there any discussion?
Very brief comment. Because I understand that this is information, but I'd like to express appreciation for the depth and the quantity of information that was researched and is presented to us in this report. It's magnificent. It's, it's a very well-done one and it gave me all kinds of ways of thinking, but I do want to think about it. And I guess we should get together at some point and work something out or at least see. So there, I still think that uh there's difference between what an APC is and what an APC does. And the former is properly the bylaw and then the second, that, the other part would be an appendage to the bylaw or a separate document. But like a terms of reference. But anyway, the base, the basic message is, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. So uh request a couple of questions here. So I guess the um by law eleven sixty-four, twenty twenty-one is currently under review. When that becomes complete, we will get a copy of that?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're currently uh still in the draft stage and we hope to present it to council, the new council. Within the next few months, because we want to make sure the new council members are comfortable with procedure and get a a good handle on what, where the challenges lie uh with the current procedure. And then we can review that when we do the, the cursory review of the new bylaw.
Okay, so, yeah, so I, I, I agree with Mr. Gargano about the depth and the uh recommendations here. It's overall is the do's and don'ts, uh point one. Uh, what the APC can do, what it can't do.
If, if I may, I think the, so just confirming that we have um received this, so we're no longer discussing about this for seven, basically a gentleman's.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I think what the, the, the challenge is, is understanding what has been referred to council and Ken, please step in if I'm, if I'm missing the point here or if I'm off the mark. Um, is that when the referral is referred to, to the APC is the, the need to understand what the, what, what the, uh, what the ask from council is essentially. Um, and it's for this particular one, it was this particular referral was for zoning-related items.
Yeah.
And the APC kept, yeah, that's right. And the APC kept, and I, all due respect, Mr. Gargano, um, kept waiting into the form and character and what it looks like, right? And I understand it's tough to make a decision when, like, for instance, if you didn't have what the place, what the building was going to look like in front of you and all you were talking about was height and lot coverage and all that. So it's just try, stay focused on that. Now, if there was. Hey, yeah, it is. Um, but the, the referral is specifically to the zone, zoning-related items. So I think that's what it comes down to is just recognizing and all due respect, uh, just recognizing that what, what the ask of, of the, the committee is. Um, and if it was a form of character uh related item or a land use issue or to do with the bylaw, then that is where the, the discussion needs to stay and not to uh move outside what the requirement.
If I may?
Yeah.
If I may, one of the, the issues that you have, now that we've got the development approval information tool, what we need to look at is what are the impacts going to be because it's gone up? It's gone wide or whatever. It's gone wide or whatever it is, you know, there's a parking lot, so that means that there's traffic associated with it. So now you can start looking at that. The, the issue is what the, is going to be the impacts upon the community. That's what the zoning by law amendment does as a land use perspective.
Which all of you hit the nail on the head with respect to that, or you know, the storm sewer and the traffic and SEPTED and all of those.
The sun study, sun shade study.
And, and I think that uh their agreement with sort of stepping the upper levels back is going to help with the sun shade study, of course. Uh and also I think that. At this stage, it's good for them to hear opinions of us. Okay, like the, the screening of the parking area, I totally agree with you there, okay? And I, I think that the points need to hear that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And even if it is not really part of our mandate, it doesn't go with the minutes.
I, I don't disagree. I don't disagree. The challenge is, is trying to stay within what the mandate of the committee is.
Yep, I understand, I understand.
I think what was in the back of my mind, if I may make. What was in the back of my mind is, as I picked on it. And I think we were dead right in that there has to be a different way of reporting. That makes it faster. I mean, this idea of taking the minutes and so on, but basically. I consider that the APC is not a, a board of experts. We're the laypeople. And we, but we offer another set of eyes. And that those other eyes look at it and sometimes those eyes see things. That mean, this isn't right. And so, so that's what I'm saying is that when I look at the OCP. When I look at the strategic plan. There are some items that come before us that are perfectly fine in terms of the technical numbers. But they just don't fit. And that's where I think we run into problems because. Can we not express that and, and that just say because it is, it's another set of eyes. We see this, we're not saying to council, you better do this. We're advisory. We're saying to council, please consider this.
And, and did we not say that in the recommendations?
Yes.
We said, we recommend that you look at.
Please consider this, yeah.
So that's fair enough, fair comment. But what we were saying was recommendation that you look again at this.
Yep.
So it's basically. Uh it's just not wanting to, if we want to be of use. To the village. And I can understand the legislative requirements and so on. If we take care of those, there's. It's just the idea that maybe there's some way we can find to go over and above. In fact, it has, as, as. Mr. Cossey has said in the past, we can express other opinions on other issues. And we, and then we'll, we'll just have to figure out what does it look like when we get it on paper. What does? Can we allow for that? And if we do, what does it look like? But again, thanks for the work on this.
Yeah.
That looks like that was unanimous.
Yes.
That was quick.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody. Nice to see you all again.